This meeting of the School Board of the City of Virginia Beach is now in session. This is our formal meeting format. At this time, I ask that my colleagues and everyone in attendance please silence your electronic devices and phones. Please note that Dr. Bergen is seated on the dais with us this evening because Dr. Spence is absent. He is at, Dr. Spence is attending the American Association of School Superintendent's annual meeting in California. At this time, I ask my colleagues to acknowledge their presence on the voting board. This time, I'm asking everyone to join me in a moment of silence. Please rise as you are able for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Our pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
We will now proceed with our awards and presentations. This is Riggs.
National Board Certified Teachers. Our first recognition is for the division's 18 newest National Board Certified Teachers. Let's meet them. Amy Watson from Kempstall Elementary School. Anne Bianchi from C-Tech Elementary School and Achievable Dream Academy. Susan Allen, Sharita Henderson, Tankard, and Julie Costriosa, Costriva, from Corporate Landing Middle School. Lee Drake from Old Nation School. Anthony Nobles from Plaza Middle School. Jessica Proval from Virginia Beach Middle School. Kelly Turner from Callum High School. Kara Kimball from Kempstall High School. Margaret Sloan and Kathleen Trace from Salem High School. Cynthia Chadwick from Tallwood High School. And unfortunately, five honorees are unable to join us tonight, but we did want to congratulate them as well. Marie Aronson from Lynn Haven Elementary School. Gregory Hogan from Plaza Middle School. Joshua Poe from Green Run High School. And Angela Cosimano and Amanda Augustine from Princess Anne High School. Now, the newest honorees now bring the school division's total of National Board Certified Teachers to 212. Since 1999, created by teachers for teachers, National Board Certification is one of the most respected distinctions in the teaching profession because it's based on rigorous standards for what accomplished teachers should know and be able to do. Candidates must demonstrate standards-based evidence showing the positive effect they have on student learning, exhibit a deep understanding of their students, content knowledge, use of data, and assessments as well as the teaching practice, show that they participate in learning communities, and provide evidence of ongoing reflection and continuous learning. Please join me again in congratulating our newest National Board Certified Teachers.
Congratulations.
Congratulations. Thank you.
Our next recognition is for the 2018 Virginia Purple Star School Award. From Hermitage Elementary School, Principal Angela Minary. From Shelton Park Elementary School, Principal Tara Brewer. From White Oaks Elementary School, Principal Stephanie Hawes. From Great Neck Middle School, Guidance Director Donna Burr. From Callum High School, Principal Daniel Smith. Counselor and Military Liaison Julian Caruso. And Student-to-Student Military Correctiveness Club Leader Will Butler. And from Salem High School, Principal Matthew Delaney. This is the first year the Virginia Department of Education has given the Purple Star designation, which is awarded to schools that have demonstrated a major commitment to students and families connected to our nation's military. With 25 percent of our students connected to an active-duty military member, this award is particularly meaningful. As such, we are proud to have military counselors who provide rich resources and assistance to families, peer-to-peer connections that welcome students into our schools, and professional development to help our staff learn best practices in understanding the needs of military families. In addition, our division throughout the year honors and celebrates our military families through scores of events, including the annual Citywide Art of the Military Child Exhibit and Remember Everyone Deployed Day. We also would like to ask some people in the audience to stand to thank them for their work, since we couldn't do any of this without their efforts. John Hammer, Navy School Liaison Officer with Naval Station Oceana Dam Neck. Natalie Meggs, our Division-wide Military Point of Contact. And School Military Counselors Starr Wiggins and Amanda Yoder. Congratulations to our 2018 Virginia Purple Star Schools. Thank you. Congratulations. Madam Chairwoman, this concludes our recognitions for the evening.
Thank you, Chairwoman Anderson, Vice Chairman Melnick, members of the board. For those of you who are watching from home, you do not need to adjust your television. I am not Dr. Spence. Dr. Spence, as Chairwoman Anderson mentioned just a minute ago, is representing the School Division at a national conference. The American Association of School Superintendents is convening this week, and Dr. Spence is proudly representing our good work at providing three sessions at this national conference. My name is Mark Bergen. As the Chief of Staff, it's my privilege to sit in tonight on Dr. Spence's behalf. So, five things that you need to know happening in Virginia Beach. At number one, our board earlier this afternoon heard a workshop presentation as part of our multi-year implementation plan to transition all of our elementary schools from half-day to full-day kindergarten. We have announced this afternoon and will be sending out a press release that the following schools will be added to the full-day program next year for the 1920 school year. Bird Neck Elementary, Brookwood, Centerville, Christopher Farms, Fairfield, Green Run, Lincoln Park, Luxford, North Landing, Pembroke, Shelton Park, Straw Bridge, Tallwood, and Three Oaks. Including these additions, Virginia Beach City Public Schools will now be offering full-day kindergarten in 45 of our elementary schools across the division. At number two, the Office of Community Engagement will be hosting the 2019 VBCPs Partnership Expo and PTA Vendor Fair on Saturday, March 2nd, from 9:00 in the morning until 1:00 in the afternoon. This will occur at Landstown High School. This is an invaluable chance for all of our stakeholders to learn more about the extensive resources and opportunities available to our schools and our students through our wonderful school partnerships with our community. There will be more than 100 division partnerships represented, demonstrating the work that they have done with the division, allowing our students to open new doors to once-in-a-lifetime experiences both inside and outside of the classroom. We do hope you'll be able to join us on Saturday, March 2 for that Partnership Expo and PTA Fair. At number three, we are launching a very important survey for all of you this coming Monday, February 18. We'd like to ask the community to help us prioritize our areas of focus to ensure that our students are successful after graduation. This is all part of the development of our next strategic plan that will help guide the division's work from 2020 through 2025. The survey will ask you, community members, to prioritize the skills and the strategies that you believe will help our students to be future-ready. The items on the survey are based on input and ideas that we've received from the Virtual Town Hall that we recently hosted, as well as school meetings and working from the Virginia Beach City Public School graduate profile. Emails will be sent to all of our parents, students, and staff, as well as anyone who has attended any of our community meetings or has given input through the Virtual Town Hall. Our Media and Communications Office will also send out an array of other communications to let everyone in the community know that they can participate in the survey, which will be opened through March 8. At number four, if you're a bargain hunter, don't miss out on a good deal. The Virginia Beach Education Foundation Pearls of Wisdom Oyster Roast and Barbecue tickets are discounted through this Friday, February 15th, for just $40. Beginning next week, on February 16th, the price will increase to $55. All of the money that this event raises helps to support our innovative teacher grants for classrooms across the division. This year, the Pearls of Wisdom Oyster Roast and Barbecue will be down at the oceanfront again at the 24th Street Park on Saturday, April 6 in the afternoon from 1:00 to 5:00. We do look forward to seeing you there, and don't forget, buy your tickets this week while they're still discounted. And finally, at number five, our School Board members were just treated between the workshop and coming in here with some lovely artwork and some notes of thank you from our elementary school students, teachers, and art teachers, and we do thank our students and principals and everyone involved in that effort preparing that room for our board members. Also, board members, in front of you, you will find certificates of recognition from the Virginia School Boards Association and appreciation of your dedication and service to excellence in education. So let me share my thanks and our collective thanks and gratitude for all that you do to serve the children of Virginia Beach City Public Schools. Madam Chairwoman, that concludes the Superintendent's Report.
Thank you, Dr. Bergen. Madam Clerk, do we have any speakers on agenda items this evening?
No, we do not.
Thank you. The Chair will entertain a motion to approve the minutes of our January 22 meeting. The motion is made by Mrs. Rye, seconded by Ms. Melnick. Mrs. Williams, you abstained because you were absent. Is that correct? Thank you. The Chair will entertain a motion to approve the minutes of our special meeting on February 5. The motion is made by Ms. Riggs, seconded by Mrs. Hughes. The voting board is open.
I was not at the meeting.
Thank you. The Chair will entertain a motion to adopt the agenda for this evening. The motion is made by Ms. Manning, seconded by Mrs. Felton. The voting board is open. The motion has passed. The consent agenda has several items on it this evening. Item A is the recommendation of the General Contractor for Landstown Elementary and Middle School Re Roof HVAC Replacement and the Pembroke Elementary School Cooling Tower Replacement. Item B is the Renaissance Academy Dominion Energy Easement Agreement. Item C has several Policy Review Committee recommendations that include Bylaw 1-5 Legal Counsel, Bylaw 1-17 Publications Regarding School Board, Bylaw 1-18 Officers' Election and Term of Officer, Office, Bylaw 1-28 Committees, Organizations, and Boards School Board Member Assignments, Bylaw 1-30 Amendment of Bylaws, Bylaw 1-40 Parliamentary Authority, Special Rules of Order, and Standing Rules, Policy 2-59 Outside Legal Counsel, Policy 5-15 Transfer Students, Policy 5-19 Pregnant and Parenting Students, Policy 5-20 Married Students, Policy 5-35 Discipline and Corporal Academic Group Punishment and Detention, and a Regulation for Corporal Punishment, Policy 5-40 Assemblies and Demonstrations, Regulation 5-40 Dispersal Statement, Regulation 5-70 Employment Certificate, Policy 5-73 Voter Registration, and Policy 7-21 Citizens Advisory Committee. The Chair will entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda. Mr. McDonald has made the motion, seconded by Ms. Melnick. The voting board is open. The motion has passed. The Chair will entertain a motion to approve the Personnel Report and Administrative Appointments. The motion is made by Ms. Melnick, seconded by Mrs. Manning. Is there discussion? Seeing none, voting board is open. The motion has passed. Dr. Bergen, would you like to introduce our new administrators?
Yes, ma'am. It'd be my honor to introduce three new administrators. When I call your name, if you'd please stand while I recognize your accomplishments. We'll start, board members, with our newest principal for Assistant Principal at Landstown Middle School, Jennifer Baxter. Jennifer, we'll look familiar to you. She has a long and distinguished career here in Virginia Beach, as well as in some of our other school divisions in the area, having served as a teacher in Hampton City, Chesapeake, and Norfolk Public, and with Virginia Beach since 2007 at Kemp's Landing Magnet, Larkspur Middle School, and Lynn Haven Middle. She currently serves as an Instructional Specialist in the Department of Teaching and Learning, and we are thrilled that she will be joining Landstown Middle School as an Assistant Principal. And Jennifer, I believe you have some guests that have joined you in the moment.
My husband, Dan, my mother, Dana, my mother-in-law, Donna, three of my four children that are here tonight, and Marion, Sentiment, and Harrison.
Next, would Michaela Gilchrist please stand? So we are thrilled to introduce Michaela Gilchrist to you as a new Assistant Principal at Green Run High School. She currently serves as Administrative Assistant at Green Run High School, and prior to that, she served as a middle school, as, I'm sorry, as a school improvement specialist at Independence Middle School and a teacher at Landstown High School. Congratulations to you, Michaela. Not to be outdone, I think you have some guests as well.
My husband, John, my mother, Marita, and my daughter, Emily. My mother, Greta, and my dad, Michael.
Congratulations, Michaela. And finally, we are thrilled to introduce to you our new Director for Title I Programs within the Department of Teaching and Learning, Laura Silverman. Laura's career began in Maryland, where she was a teacher at several schools before joining Virginia Beach in 2009. She has served with distinction as a teacher at Holland Elementary School and Rosemont Elementary School, and is currently the Assistant Principal at Holland Elementary School. Congratulations to you, Laura, as Director of Title I Programs. And I believe the front row is here for you.
This is my daughter, Olivia, my mother, Carol, my father, Richard, my closest friend, Debbie, her son, Anthony, and I also have my principal and two of our fellow teachers, Sally Richardson, Valerie Bolin, and Amy Thomas.
So, once again, congratulations, Jennifer, Michaela, Laura. Thank you for joining our administrative ranks. Thank you to your families for the sacrifices that you'll make in allowing your loved ones to be with us for a couple hours each day. And with that, Madam Chair, I turn it back to you.
Thank you, Dr. Bergen. Next, under action, the Chair will entertain a motion for the School Board of Virginia Beach to establish an ad hoc committee of three members to plan a retreat and is tasked with recommending a date, venue, agenda, and facilitator to address both governance processes and student achievement. The committee will utilize the resources of the administration to find a facilitator to address the governance process. After completion of the committee's objectives, the recommendations will presented, will be presented to the School Board for final approval. The committee members will be Kam Melnick as Chair, Sharon Felton, and Carolyn Weems. Is there a motion? Mr. Edwards has made the motion, seconded by Mrs. Weems. Is there discussion? Mrs. Holtz.
Thank you, Mrs. Chairman. This is my ninth year on the School Board, and in the past, we have always had the Chair with the administration arrange these, the retreat and everything surrounding it. There are a whole lot of logistics involved in this that really, all of us 11 members really don't have enough information about, like the choice of the speaker, the venue, the price, the budget. So we really do need administration, input from the administration. And I don't understand, it ain't broke. I'm not going to continue that, but why are we changing this now? We have to use administrative resources, and in the past, it has been the Chair with the administration. We can continue to do this. I don't see any need to change. Last time, when we wanted the VSBA, and it appeared like things had already been arranged, we had one of our team members, one of our members, to be unwilling to be a team player, so we were presented with this dilemma, choose something else. But why does the method have to change? I don't see any need for it, and I hope we will vote this down. Thank you.
Mrs. Weems.
Yes, just to clarify, we did have a retreat scheduled. My husband had major surgery that day, so I chose to be with him instead of the retreat. And VSBA has rules that if not 100 percent participation, they cannot conduct or facilitate a retreat. Thus, the retreat was postponed. They could, they would have had 10 of us there because everyone had agreed to go to that retreat, but unfortunately, that's the rule. In the past, I've been on the board longer than nine years, and we have had ad hoc committees. We've had the Chair and Superintendent to plan the retreat. We've had the Chair and Vice Chair and Superintendent, and we have had ad hoc committees. Mr. Edwards and I thought that it was especially needed this year to get input from every one of us sitting up here. I don't understand why we would not want to do that. It is a School Board retreat, so I would like to get input, and as a member of the proposed committee, hopefully, we will be talking to every single one of our board members to get input, because it's our retreat, and we need to make sure that we have a retreat that's effective and that serves the needs of all of our board members. And of course, this does not mean that we will not get administrative input. It does not mean that at all. I would like to say, in the last few years, it has been done differently. I would like a good input. I would like an effective retreat, and I would like to have outcomes of a retreat that we can see for the whole year. It doesn't matter how it's been done in the past. I think this year, it requires a little bit different, different change. The Superintendent has done exactly what we asked him to do when he came to be Superintendent. Mr. Edwards asked him to do the retreat. Mrs. Anderson has done so, so it wasn't a case of Dr. Spence coming and taking over the retreat. He did exactly what he was asked to do. I did talk with Dr. Spence yesterday, last night, and he fully supports the ad hoc committee. In fact, he laughingly said, "I don't care if I ever plan another board retreat." And I don't think that's his job. I think that, I think it's the board's job to plan a board retreat with the Superintendent coming and assist with our needs after we have planned that. So I hope that we will, we'll vote for this ad hoc committee, and we'll, we will plan and do our best to do a great retreat so that everybody is satisfied, and with the administration's help, after we plan it. So I completely support this. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Edwards.
Well, Mrs. Williams said most of it. I mean, I was the chair back when we shifted models of preparation for retreats, and, you know, it was probably a dozen or so years ago, we had a situation where, you know, board members were not thrilled with where we might have it, or what we were going to do, or the schedule, and all that stuff. And I was very happy at that point, saying, "Okay, let's get a committee and do the appropriate interface with everybody and bring it back, and we can, you know, approve it and move on and have a good one." So I'm thrilled. I, as I say, I threw that out as an idea after we sat around the table down in Einstein after, on January 22nd, and there was strong consensus, we needed a retreat, but everybody was like, there was stone silence when we talked about, "What are we going to do and how are we going to do it?" There was silence, and I said, "Okay." And it was that night that I sent Mrs. Anderson this question, "Hey, how about a committee?" And so anyway, I'm glad it's on the agenda, and I hope, obviously, that it'll pass, so thanks.
Mrs. Manning.
Yes, I would just like to thank Mr. Edwards and Ms. Weems for your leadership on this issue and making this ad hoc committee happen. I think that it is needed, and the most important part is having every board member's voice heard, rather than just one or two. And I also believe that it's not fair to place the burden on the Superintendent to plan our board retreat. I know he would be willing to do that if we asked him to, but I think it's better for us to do that ourselves, since it is our retreat, and things that we're going to be discussing are regarding the board, not necessarily the administration. So thank you so much, Ms. Weems, Mr. Edwards, for making this happen.
So I'm pleased that the recommendations will be brought back to the board. We will be able to vote as a whole group, once the recommendations are given to us on what we decide to do for a retreat. So I think we'll all have a voice in it, and it's my, it's my hope that this will work out so that we have a meaningful retreat that we can all grow from. Seeing no further discussion, the voting board is open. The next item on our agenda is information. And our first, our information item this evening is the review of select schools' plans for continuous improvement. Welcome, Dr. Robertson.
The purpose of tonight's presentation is to share select schools' plan for continuous improvement for your review in advance of seeking your approval of these plans on February 26th. This request to approve schools' PCIs is based on new requirements that are part of the revised standards of accreditation. It's important to note that all of our schools are fully accredited when viewing this presentation. In the previous Board meeting, I presented a workshop with additional details about two key processes, school support and the plan for continuous improvement. The goal of the school support process is to provide real-time support to schools using a tiered system approach to support. And the goal of the plan for continuous improvement is to annually develop SMART goals using the Plan Do Check Act format to monitor, assess, and make adjustments to drive school improvement. In terms of the plan for continuous improvement, school teams comprised of administrators and teachers develop and revise plans each year before sharing with the School Planning Council. The School Planning Council does include parents and students. The PCI is then available to school staff, it's updated quarterly as new data becomes available, and is used in teacher PLC meetings to drive instruction. The PCI plans are not posted on school websites, as they are viewed as internal working documents used to drive decision-making. Recall, I shared this slide in the workshop presentation two weeks ago as well. Here we see the three performance levels, with language within the performance level stating that specific local and state actions and interventions are required to improve performance on indicators rated at Level 2 and Level 3. It also talks about the accreditation rating stating that schools with all school quality indicators at either Level 1 or Level 2 are accredited. And it also includes an example from a middle school, where you can see three areas, they have Level 1 performance, three areas they have Level 2 performance, and that school is accredited. In the 2018-19 school year, changes to the standards of accreditation included language requiring the Local Education Association to review for approval any school's PCI if they had one Level 2 designation, even if the school was accredited. Under the administrative code noted here on the slide, it states in part, "If a school quality indicator is at Level 2, the school's multi-year improvement plan shall be approved by the local School Board." For context, all elementary schools and middle schools have six reported areas that are noted here. And all high schools have eight areas reported now, with a ninth area coming in 2021-22 around college career and civic readiness. Noted here on the slide are the 27 elementary schools, nine middle schools, and nine high schools, with at least one Level 2 designation. Majority are in the Achievement Gaps English and Math column, with one high school noted in the area of chronic absenteeism. Here are the expected performance levels, 1 through 3, for the achievement indicators. The indicator is listed on the left column, and then the expected benchmarks for each level on the performance levels are also noted, working from left to right. Recall, the majority of our schools in the review had Level 2 in the area of Achievement Gaps in English and Math, and that's defined as less than 10 points below the state benchmark, which is 75%. Noted here on the slide are the expected performance levels for the other school quality indicators. Recall, we had one high school that had a Level 2 in chronic absenteeism, which is defined as between 16 and 24% of their students have had more than 10% of their students absent. Here's a snapshot of a school's PCI, showing the one area highlighted in yellow as a Level 2, with key data noted and a summary statement with more detail on the Level 2 area. In the other 18 pages of this particular PCI, you'll see SMART goals, key data points, interim measures, supports in place, professional learning plan, and updates as the year has progressed, all following the Plan Do Check Act format. To assist the Board, we've highlighted the areas for review within each plan to help reduce the number of pages to review. Here is an example of how these multi-year plans are edited to show changes over time. These documents are living documents, and meant to show how adjustments are made following the Plan Do Check Act format. In this case, adjustments were made to the end-of-year 10 Marks Assessment Performance for students in grades 1 through 5, and the Students with Disability Goal was adjusted to meet the state accreditation metric of reducing the failure rate by 10%. Also to be noted on the slide are the strike-through edits, noting actions that are not currently in place and new actions added for this year. Here's an example of how these multi-year plans are updated quarterly with division benchmark data to guide instructional decision-making at the school, classroom, and individual level. Note under the Do section, the Action Plan Review Cycle is for school year 2018-19, and the update was in December of 2018. This will help Board members determine the time of the data under review. In the Check section, you will see actual data based on the math goal area for all students in grades 2 through 5, in this case, and for the target group, which is students with disabilities. School teams use this data during PLC meetings to plan from the school level to the grade level, to the teacher level, and to the individual student level to ensure this data improves. Moving forward, we're asking for the School Board to take the next couple of weeks to review these plans. All the plans are located on the School Board SharePoint site. If you have specific questions related to any school plan or any data, if it's elementary schools, you can direct those questions to Sheran Lewis, if it's middle schools, to Cheryl Woodhouse, or high schools, to Daniel Keever, and of course, you can also direct those questions to me. And then, of course, we're asking for this to be an action item, for the plans to be approved on February 26th. At this time, I'm available to answer any questions.
Mrs. Manning.
Okay, so, I read through the 700-plus-page document that we were given in our agenda packet. Are you saying that there's a different set of data that we're going to be getting on the SharePoint site, or is that what we've received in our agenda packet?
What you've received in your agenda packet is the up-to-date data for the review.
Okay, because I guess I'm a little confused, and maybe we should sit down and talk about this, because some of the data that was presented didn't tell me what it was measuring, and it's different in each school. So, I had some concerns about the data that I was reviewing, some of the numbers were a whole lot lower than I thought. So, I want to make sure that I'm reviewing this data properly, so just contact the appropriate people for that.
Yes, and Ms. Manning, I emailed the entire group, she asked some really good questions in her review earlier on the PCI plans, which actually resulted in me making some adjustments to the presentation. If you are not familiar with the way these plans are set up, it can be a little confusing as to what you're really looking at. When you're looking at the plans, the majority of the schools follow the same format, and that is, they all are going to have at least two goals, many are having three goals. And they will take their data and their one particular goal, and they'll work all the way through the previous year's data, to the current year's data, to any adjustments that are made, and then they'll repeat that process for a brand-new set of data, or for a brand-new goal, until they've accomplished all three goals. Some of the plans are more detailed in terms of clearly identifying the assessment and the year and the time than others. Remember, recall that this document is a living document worked on by a school team, so they're very familiar with the data, and they're, so, you know, they are entering things that they're very familiar with, so it's easy for them not to have additional pieces added. So, your questions were very good, and I'm happy to sit down with you, or anyone on my team's happy to sit down with you, because, again, because of the questions you asked, I added two slides today, hopefully, to show you the way that process looks.
And then, just one other common theme that I saw in going through the packet, under choice, it refers to, in most of the schools, that discipline referrals will be reduced by a certain percentage. And I know that the outcome that we want is to improve student behavior, but when we're telling teachers that they have to reduce referrals as a goal, I have a great concern that teachers are going to feel that they can't refer students when they need to. So, I would like for us to consider that language, and perhaps maybe using some different language there.
Yes, very good, absolutely.
Thank you.
Any other suggestions or comments? Thank you, Dr. Robertson. Do we have any standing committee reports? Mr. McDonald. Why don't you have a good one?
I'll see what I can do. Thank you, Madam Chairman. The Legislative Committee met earlier today and received an update from Joel Andrews of Kemper Consulting, who is in Richmond at the moment, and he provided us with status of key legislation as of today, following crossover that happened last week. As the Board heard earlier, House and Senate budget conferees are working to develop a budget for the state. There are differences between what the Governor, the House, and the state have proposed. All proposals point to funding an additional 3% raise for our employees, in addition to the 2% already provided for the biennium. But the House and Senate differ in the timing the raises would be implemented, with the House delaying funding for the raises for six months. Also, in flux are funding amounts for additional school counselors, and how much school divisions would receive in lottery funds. Beyond the budget, legislation that began with VB CPS to provide flexibility in making up days in the event of mandatory evacuations passed the Senate, and is suspected to pass the House later this week, providing flexibility up to five days for all divisions that might be impacted by future mandatory evacuations. Overall, it's been a busy session with mostly positive news in the area of education, and we'll continue to track ongoing legislative actions, and we'll update the Board as usual. Again, thank you to my fellow committee members, Vice Chair Melnick, Ms. Felton, and thank you to Dr. Bergen, Mr. Sutton, Ms. Lanetti, Ms. Allen, for their work and support of our efforts.
Thank you, Mr. McDonald. Mr. Edwards.
The Achievable Dreams Ad hoc Committee met a couple weeks ago, and we will meet again next week. We are looking at potential adjustments to the enrollment area. Nothing's been firmed up yet, and the long-term goal of the committee is to address and make adjustments to the memorandum of understanding that exists between the Achievable Dreams Board and the School Board in producing this incredible program for the youth that are in it, and potentially others that may be able to enroll if the area of enrollment is enlarged.
Thank you, Mr. Edwards. Mrs. Melnick.
So, I attended the Governor's School Regional Board Meeting. There were 514 students, some around the Hampton Roads area that applied, 152 of those were from Virginia Beach, and they should hear probably around April. This year, we have 146 students that attend the Governor's School. We're also going to be sending our kids out on some pretty awesome trips. The instrumental music department is leaving on the 12th of April for a trip to Germany and France. We have GSA Theater Department taking a New York trip, Vocal Music is going to New York, Visual Arts is going to New York, and so is the Dance Department. There are also two events this summer, and there is a Vocal Arts Camp, July 7th through the 13th, really awesome information that I will post, and there's also in July, a Coastal Broadway Collaborative Camp, where there's an audition for this one, so I'll also post this. I think that's it, there's a lot of good stuff going on at GSA.
Thank you, Ms. Melnick. Mrs. Riggs.
Okay, I have a couple announcements. The CIP Modernization Review Committee that meets every year, I'm the Chair, and Laura Hughes is on it with me, and after the presentation that was given to us a couple weeks ago by Mr. Arnold, and it was also given to us at the Joint City Council School Board Meeting, we decided it's the same exact one, so we did not have that, I decided not to have the meeting. Laura conferred with me that that was fine, so I just wanted to let you guys know. The other thing is, Sister Cities! So, I told you guys I'm going to be a broken record, I've been at our rehearsals for our Youth Ambassador students, there's five of them, and it's so, it's awesome to see the talent that we have, I guess you guys know about our talent, but to see these kids, we have a 9th grader, 10th grader, two 11th graders, actually, three, and there's an Irish jig, there is an oral preview, a presentation that one of our Iraqi students, she talks about her journey with her family from Iraq, war-torn Iraq in 2009, to the United States, it's just really good. And then, we have one little girl, little girl, because she's tiny, but she writes her own compositions on the piano, and she wrote her composition, and it's about her military father going away on deployment, and so she wrote that, she's playing that, it's like four minutes long, and someone asked her last night, "So, how often have you done this?" She goes, "Oh, I write one every year, I've been writing one every year since I was five." So, these kids are so talented, so, you know, if you haven't got your ticket, please see me, because it's just going to be awesome to see. It's at Mocha, it's on March 1st at 6:30. We're going to have our steel drum band playing at the beginning as well, we're having our cheerleaders from Bayside welcoming everyone, so it's going to be really neat. So, I'm excited. The other thing is, the Sister Cities Annual Breakfast that we started last year, that we had at Town City Club, is going to be on the 4th of April, and we'd love to have everyone come to that. It's just a really great event, too. So, see me about it, and we'll talk some more later. Thank you.
On the Sister Cities, these students, there's going to be a winner, correct?
Yes, what they're doing is they're competing for a scholarship, and to be the Youth Ambassador for the year. And so, these five students are competing, and they'll be competing that night as they're presenting their platforms, they're going to have a platform as well, a global platform, and then their talent, and our judges will be there. Actually, our own Sheila McGulais is our top judge, and Ava, Bobby Malady's wife, I can't think of her last name, she's one of our judges, and another person are going to be our judges, and it's just going to be real exciting, because once, they'll announce it that night of who wins, and then we'll also present that Youth Ambassador the morning of our breakfast as well. So, they get, she gets, she, he, it, whoever wins gets a $2,000 scholarship, and then there's one for $1,500, and one for $500 for second and third. And the scholarship does not go to them until, it goes to their university of choice once they decide on their university, so.
Thank you.
It's really exciting.
Mrs. Weems.
First, I attended the CSEP Regional Board Meeting this past week, and I just kind of want to brag on some things our CSEP students have been doing in our division. As you know, we are in about 25 of our school buildings here in Virginia Beach. They all participated, so many of our kids participated in the Autism Speaks Walk last semester. At RA Renaissance Academy, they did a great job on an oceanography project. At Landstown, the CSEP students participated in Spirit Week, dressing up like the 1980s, that's so long ago. participated in Spirit Week, dressing up like the 1980s. That's so long ago. And then they also participated in Heritage Week by making diversity posters. At Glenwood, Pembroke, and Rosemont Elementarys, the CSEP students enjoyed Winter Blast, full of games, food, a photo booth, and fake snow. So, they loved that. At Princess Anne, our CSEP kids participated in homecoming, and also filling Thanksgiving baskets for families in need, as well as the Special Olympics. And at Landstown, one of our CSEP students, Kelton, represented Landstown in the DECA District Competition, and he won first place, so he will be going to states. So, that is just awesome. Again, CSEP students rising and accomplishing so much, and being included in the general community of Virginia Beach public schools. So, that was exciting. Also, I attended the Green Run Collegiate Meeting last night, and as you may know, tomorrow, Wednesday, is the lottery for the Green Run Collegiate students. They have 30 percent more applications, so they have 275 kids trying to get those 125 places tomorrow. So, if you want to go watch, I don't know, and be nervous, you can. It's at 6 o'clock in the auditorium at Green Run. Another exciting thing that the Green Run Collegiate Board is doing is we're having a fundraiser, and save the date, little flyers will be sent to all of us and staff, as well as the Green Run Collegiate Community and business partners and everything. But it is going to be an outstanding event. It is going to be a gala on May 4th at the New American Dream Theater up at Town Center. Reception, 6 o'clock to 7:30, and then a performance. And these two performances are originals, original performances. They're musicals. The first one is 1619, The Compelling Story of Native Africans Who First Set Foot on American Soil. It is the story of lives and cultures interrupted, and destinies grafted together. 1619 is a 400-year-old story that must be told. So, that's the first performance. The second is The Witch of Punggol, The Real Story Behind the Witch Hunt That Mesmerized the Early Colonies, From the Accusations Made Against Punggol Resident Grace Sherwood, To the Dramatic Conclusion, Her Trial by Water. So, two musicals that I think are going to be great. Again, save the date, May 4th, you'll be getting more information. Tickets in advance are $35. So, let's go and support Green Run Collegiate, and watch two great musicals. Thank you.
Mrs. Felton, sorry. I'll get you next.
Thank you, Madam Chair. The Equity Council meets monthly, and myself and Mrs. Malmick attended this month, and we'd just like to pass on some information to you that was there, and I'll try to keep it short. But tonight, as we sit here, attending this, the Parent Connection Workshop Series has been taking place all year. And tonight, at Landstown High School Auditorium, they're having a presentation tonight about Strokes and What We Need to Know. So, if you need any more information about this series, you can go to www.vbschools.com/ParentConnection, and all of these series will be taped, and you can view them later in your leisure. Also, I'd like to present to you through the Equity Council that the Princess Anne County Training School, and Union Kids for the High School Alumni and Friends, will be having spoken word and oratorical contests. This will take place April 27th, and I'm announcing it now because students from grades 9 to 12 are eligible to participate, and all applications must be in by March 8th. I do encourage all students, and those that are hearing my voice, to allow the students to go out and to participate in this oratorical and spoken word. If you've ever been to one, you come away well-versed, and well-engaged with the students and what they have to say. Again, I would say, get your applications in, and you can reach out to Mrs., go back to the www.vbschools.com/ParentConnection, and you can get this information as well. I will post it as well on my website, and get you involved, wanting to get you involved. Also, I just want to make an announcement to get you aware that on March 7th, 9:00 a.m. through 1:00 p.m., Landstown High School, we will have our Partnership Expo, and this, again, will include our students. It's all about our students. And if you've ever gone to one of these expos, you will come away, again, well-informed by your students presenting what they're about, and talking more about all of the academies that we have. So, note your calendars, and I will post most of this information on my page, and get it out to you as well. Thank you.
And I just wanted to add that all of the Parent Connection Workshops are available online, and the last one that we had specifically was so important, all about special education, and that's now available online at that same website, so.
Mrs. Ryan?
Good evening, all. So, the next Policy Committee meeting is Thursday, it's Thursday, 1 o'clock. And last night, I had the pleasure of standing in as Mrs. Manning's alternate for the Gifted Advisory Committee meeting. It was at Bayside High School. They really laid out the welcome mat, and so, a thank you to the high school and the Health Sciences Academy in particular. Two takeaways that I thought were worthy of note, and I think at this point, at least those of us more, board members not recently elected, have been over there for a visit during the school day. But something I wasn't aware of, that among the collaborations with EVMS, is that the underrepresented population in the academy is assigned a medical school mentor, who works with that student beginning freshman year. And so, that, to me, struck me as quite impressive. And the committee themselves reported that, you know, we know because of past presentations here that they do site visits, the committee members. So, they've developed now a site visit template, so that the information that comes back to the chair from all the different members, you know, is somewhat consistent, so they can compare and review apples and apples. And it ended with Dr. DeVries just sharing the timetable to the committee for moving forward between now and June with regard to filling the anticipated slots that will be opening up. So, thank you.
As you can see, we've had reports from 10 committees tonight. So, being a school board member is not just showing up on Tuesday nights every two weeks. We have a lot of other responsibilities that we do. I just wanted to mention that, because I don't think we've ever had 10 committees mentioned in one night, but we've all been really busy lately, and we're also, as you know, in the middle of budget season. So, now we're meeting every Tuesday just to discuss budget for a while. So, but that concludes our formal meeting. Madam Clerk, do we have any speakers on non-agenda items?
Yes, ma'am, we do. We'll transition into that in just a moment.
Thank you.